All right. We'll call to order the regular committee of the whole meeting. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Consmar Shumers.
Here.
Dutterman.
Here.
Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Obrin.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kearns.
Here.
All right, our first item, Mr. DeLacy, Downtown Vision 2030.
Welcome. Well, thank you. It's tough when you're retired, you just can't remember what day of the week it is. Was there, I do have a meeting to go to?
We'll send you a calendar invite next time.
There we go. My name's Gary DeLacy, I am the Chair of Clinton Hometown Pride, and that's the, what I'm representing here. We established four goals for this upcoming year, and one of those goals was looking at downtown revitalization under the concept of what I would call a magnet block, what would be something that would attract people, and keeping it small, and just give you a few examples to think about if you haven't researched. My days down in Danville, Iowa, I was close to Burlington, Jefferson Street in Burlington, which is much larger, it's about seven blocks, would be a concept of where Burlington invested in one part and really became a magnet for that downtown area. Little bit closer would be the District of Rock Island, if you've ever been down there, and some of the things that they've done. So, the committee has met several times, and we've actually tapped into some of those communities that have done those things and gotten some ideas, and one of the things that they looked at is, we need to really hear from our community. So, we actually took three or four of our subcommittee meetings, and with input from Grow Clinton and the Downtown Alliance, we worked out up a survey, and then they actually passed it along to a state group that will be coming, I believe, next year, and they were excited by that, this survey. And so then we conducted this basically the month of May, and what you're going to see on here, and I'm not going to read this whole thing to you, there's a lot of data on here, and one of the things, I'm just, I'm going to just preface it is, I'm not going to read this to you, I want you to spend some time to take a look at that, and what the invitation would be is, I know both Bill and Rhonda have attended some of our subcommittee meetings, if we are going to move forward with, you know, there's some pretty exciting and some pretty clear things that came out in this survey, and we had a meeting yesterday with Matt and with Megan in talking to move forward, but we know we're going to need you, the City Council, to be on board with it, along with Downtown Alliance, with Grow Clinton, and other entities, to actually make this concept move forward. And one of my challenges to you would be is, is I know you've, you get pulled in a lot of directions with your budget, I was just listening to some of the things there, but one of the things that I will challenge you on in this planning is, how can we be a little more proactive? And really pointed, because right now, I think you guys are, there are pockets of excellence in Clinton, in different things, but what I would really like to see is, can we get a block of excellence in something like that, that would really be an attraction piece? And I do think there's some really good data here. On the backside, we tried to summarize the four questions, and we went through on different patterns and things that we were seeing, we had 439 respondents, and for a community this size, I would say that's a pretty good sample. And my challenge to you is, our next meeting is going to start up in September, we kind of talked about how busy it's going to be in August, but we would, we really need to have two or three of you at our meetings, you know, moving forward, because if we don't get the City Council input, discussion, and buy-in eventually, along with Grow Clinton and the Downtown Alliance, all we can do as Hometown Pride is act as a catalyst. And the one thing we can do outside of that is now, we are a 501(c)(3), and we talked about writing grants and those kinds of things to try to spur things forward. You know, one of the things that came up yesterday, and I've really reflected in the last 24 hours, is, you know, making the investment in that area that would attract businesses to come into that area. So, do you designate that block, and you really work between the storefronts to make that happen? And that kind of idea really intrigues me, and hopefully, you know, through a lot of discussion and so forth, maybe that will intrigue you as well. And just talking with Matt and Megan, I do think this survey could act as a catalyst to move forward, if we choose to do so. You know, one of the challenges from that subcommittee, I will say, when we started working on this back in February and Marches, we're going to do another survey, and then we're going to put it on the shelf, and my pledge is, I'm going to do everything to try to bring life to this survey, and what we can do to move forward. So, tonight, all I'm doing is that kind of premise and put that challenge out, and we really need your support in, down the road, and with this committee that's been working now for about six months, that we get two or three of you guys there on a consistent basis to represent the, this, the City Council, move, along with, I know Matt's made the commitment, Megan's made the commitment, we also have other members of the Downtown Alliance besides Megan on that committee, so I think it has potential. So, at that point, I'll open it up for any questions you have, if not, I would, like I said, I would love that opportunity in September to have two or three of you to be active in those discussions representing this City Council. Any questions? Matt, did I forget anything?
Oh, you did, uh, great.
See, he may made sure that I was a good.
Rarely I'll be quiet.
Yeah, it is, it is a rare moment. Other than that, thank you for your time, and I would look forward to it. I know Bill and Rhonda are on that email chain, I'll put that out, we are, we didn't really set a date, but I think we're looking around sometime after Labor Day with our next meeting. A lot going on in August, and we talked as a subcommittee that it just probably wasn't going to work to do that, but September, we're going to get busy again, going on what are the next steps. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, doing the study as well, and this is presented extremely well, so, thank you very much.
Very good.
All right. Julie Bray. We're going from downtown revitalization to workers' comp.
Something like that. I'm Julie with AC Root Insurance, and I'm here for probably the next four hours, no worries, summarizing the workers' comp and ICAP, property and vehicle liability, all the fun stuff. I'm going to start by introducing Dean Shady, he is with IMWCA, which stands for Iowa Municipalities Workers' Comp Association, and he's here coming first with great news.
Thank you, Julie. I'm Dean Shady, I'm the Safety and Risk Improvement Manager with IMWCA, and I'm here to congratulate the city on your workers' comp improvements. The city has had, in the 25-plus years that I have worked with the city of Clinton, you have put together four of the best years in your history for work comp. The last two, by any measure, have been really good. And to put that in, you know, the perspective that you really want to hear, a couple of years ago, your experience modification factor was sitting at a 103, and Julie can explain what all that is, I won't get into the weeds, but it basically, a 103 is, it's average, okay? Your premium at that point a couple of years ago was $168,000. And, you know, work comp is really based off how much you use it, and unfortunately, prior to those years, you were using it quite a bit. Skip forward to where we're at in this fiscal year, your premium now is $52,000. That's a big difference. Your experience modification is a 6.8, which is very, very good for a community of this size. I am going to challenge you that the lowest you can get is a 5.5, which would put you at $42,000 of premium, so, there's still a little bit there on the table. But, you know, that is a tremendous improvement, and that is $100, you know, $111,000 that you were talking earlier about other places where you need to use it, hopefully that's a welcome change. But more importantly, and the thing we sometimes lose sight of when we talk about the money, your people aren't getting hurt. They're coming here, they're working, they're doing the jobs you're paying them for, and they're going home at night, so, you know, you're getting the work out of them, you're saving money, which really, you know, congratulate to you in being good stewards of the public's money. And really, the team that has made this possible, you know, first of all, I'd like to recognize Eli Boss as your safety coordinator, you know, he's provided great direction and really, you know, pushing, you know, in the direction that the city has needed for a while. Your safety committee, I've sat in on their meetings, they're active, they're engaged, you know, they're really helpful in that whole area of getting the buy-in. Your department heads and staff, they're charged with implementing these changes, and they're doing an excellent job. To Matt, who, you know, is really the person that is bringing this all together, holding people accountable and making it go, and then finally, I want to point out, you know, to your agent Julie Bray, you're very fortunate to have a very engaged agent that really is looking out for your interests and actively helping with that. So, again, congratulations, and please keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And keep in mind payroll's up, so, it always grows.
Yeah, good point.
So, anyway, now the fun, exciting part of ICAP. We have actually good news, the overall price difference this year is only a 4.39% difference from last year. And I know we've put out graphs and stuff that have been floating around, but what we've never looked at is, it's easy to, if you have the same house, and three years later have the same house, and you look at the difference in premium, other than construction change in prices, that's apples to apples. So, I went back and I looked in 2023, the buildings and the contents, which would be the equipment, and the buildings, of course, and like the desks, computers, the TVs, it had an overall value of insurance of $178,314,202. Then in 2024, we look at this every year, you buy new buildings, you build new buildings, new equipment, this is not vehicles, it went up to $200,102,015,900. Then this year, it's insured for every building, all contents, $204,873,598. The vehicles, we insure vehicles based on the cost of new, so if you have even the plows, the plows are included in that vehicle, we keep close track of that, and that's what it starts at. 2023, you had vehicles insured for $14,713,000. Vehicles in '24, $18,483,000. This year, $19,564,723. You always have $2 million general liability, auto liability is also at that, law enforcement liability, public officials liability, and you have a $5 million excess, so you are insured for $7 million for liability. Cyber is also in that. So, basically, between 2023 and 2025, the buildings are worth more than $26 million. The vehicles are worth 4.8 million than 2023. Therefore, yes, the price of insurance has increased, however, we have items that you have purchased and built. There are two things I absolutely hate, deratio and COVID funds. Deratio changed the insurance industry like no other, and I'm only 57, so I'm stuck here for a while. So, that got rid of 900 and some plus insurance companies in the state of Iowa, and then reinsurance went nuts. Well, you have to have money in the bank in order to pay these claims, if you don't, you go under. ICAP was formed in 1986, and it ensures, you're member-owned, you are one of the owners of ICAP, same with IMWCA, they've been in existence since 1986, and they have 800 of 943 cities in the state of Iowa, they have 75 of the 99 counties, and it's a self-insurance program, they are not-for-profit, so, the premiums go up, but so do the payouts. In the last five years, so just between July 1 of '20 to July 1 of '25, ICAP has paid out $1,506,000 in claims for the city of Clinton. In addition, some of these claims or suits are still open, so that figure will change. I always hear, insurance doesn't pay anything. Yeah, it does. In 2019, ICAP paid a 1.14 million for that fire truck. Deratio sucked to be ICAP in 2020, we moved them from Cincinnati, the city, they got nonrenewed, you guys got non-renewed because of the salt building that collapsed? So, we moved the property to ICAP in August 1st, or July 1st, and deratio happened. So, they paid out almost a half a million dollars for a storm, and it cost you guys $1,000 instead of $1,000 per building. So, I just want you to know, ICAP is very strong, very solid, we constantly check with EMC travelers, and before deratio and even COVID, they always said, when you get below $25,000, well, now it's $15,000. So, I hope we never get to $15,000. So, anyway, that is that, the other suggestion I just came up with basically while sitting here, a lot of times you guys don't know, I tell Matt, I tell Anita, I tell the department heads, and each year we meet individually with the department heads, we go over the equipment, the vehicles, we confirm, but otherwise, I'm happy to do a quarterly report for the claims that are out there, I can't be specific, I can say, the MTA had this, it's an at-fault, not at-fault, I can tell you what's been paid out, it's just a thought, if you guys care. I mean, because you don't know, what you're paying for.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So, I mean, quarterly good?
Yeah, that's sufficient, I would think.
Can you make it like this downtown survey slide?
Sure. I may need some assistance in that, no, any way you want, but anyway, it's actually good news, finally, and I think, knock on wood, the insurance has to have plateaued, there's going to be no other bad weather elements whatsoever. Any questions?
I think so.
The river will not rise.
Julie, just for context, what does 4.39% increase equal in dollars?
Oh, sure, I left my phone up there. Last year, I need your calculation, Mr. [inaudible]. Last year was $1,337,855, and this year is $1,396,640.
I thought it was like $138,000.
$138,000?
But I mean, when you look at, you're still going up another 4.8, and another million one for the vehicles. So, but again, the COVID funds, they flooded you guys, and that's wonderful.
Yeah, oh, no, I know, and it's changed.
You build it, you buy it, I insure it.
It's changed things a lot. So, what kind of, for our premiums, Julie, what kind of role does like the deductibles play on?
Oh, well, I always check, and now you're at $5,000.
Okay.
But then I asked for a $10,000 deductible, it saved you $5,000 a year.
$5,000 a year?
So, why would you buy?
Off of 1.3 million?
Right.
Oh.
Exactly. So, I always discuss that with Matt, and when we did the $5,000 originally, it had saved a considerable amount.
Okay. Is that $5,000 for everything, or does it depend on?
Every, all, the entire bottom line.
Any occurrence?
Oh, you mean, what the deductible is? No, it's just property, the vehicles are, hold on a minute, 500 comp, 1,000 collision.
Okay, okay.
But we've had, we've had several, besides a $1.14 million fire truck, we've had several other cars replaced full.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, unfortunately, the police seem to drive fast.
Looking right at you, Matt.
I was pointing way out, but.
And the Paddy Deere, they get them, but no, we work diligently, and then even just to give you an example, the band shell, Brian, and again, I work closely with all these guys, they're wonderful, I think they're afraid of me, I don't know why, since I have a personality of a porcupine, but I'm warm and flirty like a porcupine, my husband says, but band shell, there was hardly any wind, and they called and said, the roof was burnt off, I'm going, okay. So, anyway, here, this is the person who fixed it, I mean, a big company, they were going to have to install 3/4-inch plywood over existing 7/16 OSB, should not have been ever used over trusses 24 inches on center, so I'm going, oh, this will be lovely. Anyway, it won't hold with fasteners under pressure, so the band shell roof was $30,810. And I'm going, oh, so then they deduct ACV till it's fixed of $7,000, so, $5,000 deductible, you guys got cut a check for $18,438 plus temporary repairs. So, in the end, once it's fixed, you guys will have only out five grand, but they will fix $25,000, and they went ahead and put that 3/4 plywood. And to me, it's light, kind of quality, it's not ICAP at all, but that's what's nice, they cover those 2080s, they, they only work with government entities.
Yep. One more question for you, Julie, because I know, for instance, so what is your process with our department heads, let's say, chief buys a new police vehicle, it ends up in community development, what are you doing to, or let's say that police vehicle gets sold, what, what is your standard protocol for tracking new vehicle in, new vehicle out?
Well, let me go back several years, I've done this since 1989, and I can't think of the guy's name, but that happened, police called and said, delete this, impound. Pretty soon, some guy, what's his name, he gets rear-end, and I'm like, wait a minute, we deleted that, impound, so that's when the whole process changed. So, now when they say, delete this, okay, what did you do with it? Did you give it to a different department? Because we've had them, like Eli has one from St. Emergency Management, you know, all that, and then their system is smart enough, it can track by the VIN, so it's not so much of a duplicate policy or VIN, it's if I would have deleted that, but ICAP still would have stood by, and it was the other guy's fault, so nothing happened, but it's just the idea, that's when everything changed. And then I also confirm with Anita, and they also add, so I have Dennis telling me, I have the police telling me, whoever is doing it, I'd rather be told three times than never.
And Dennis is in charge of all surplus, so, any items that we end up giving away that we would have to cover or sell, I should say, not give away, like say, like a bus that travels around that had library books, or like a trolley, all those things.
Let's see, are we still paying on the trolley?
No.
Okay, are you 100% certain?
100%.
Okay.
I ask every year, even like the library, there was a.
I think it's in Missouri.
The van, the bookmobile. So, every year, and then just also to tell you, because I, again, am really nice, I will, before we would give, this was, remember, I've been there since 1989, we would give, Matt's a department head, give them the list of the vehicles. Yep, boom. Well, there was one individual, I won't name anybody, he's not here anymore, who added a car, saying man, a truck, okay, well, then I thought, you know what, he doesn't have a clue, so I deleted that truck on that list, and I said, here's your list.
That wasn't checking it.
Yep, after that, you're going to give me the list.
Yeah.
Then I double-check, not that I don't trust men, but I don't, because everybody's busy.
Yeah.
And again, my dream job is the IRS, a little too late if it's tough, so, I will constantly check, I argue, even the fuel at the airport, fuel prices go up, go down, and it only changes once a year, so I'll find out what the fuel price is, we adjust it, because if something happens to those tanks, you're out that fuel, because I never got so scared in my life with salt, with that salt building.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, oh, yeah, oh, it's a salt, you know, but again, we insure the salt, we insure everything, because you just don't know what can happen, and then deratio happens, so no, very hands-on, but again, like I said, the department heads work very well, and even if the changing of the guards, I meet them, scare them, and they're good.
Okay, okay, very good, cool.
I love public speaking, as everybody can tell.
I'm still stuck on the porcupine.
Well, and just so I know, yeah, my husband always said, I'll never have a heart attack or brain tumor. I said, what? You don't have either? Okay. 33 years of marriage. So, any other questions?
Thank you for that pleasant performance there.
Well, I didn't know I was following the audit report either. I'm sitting around with that guy talking, I'm going, yeah, they're not going to like you. So, anyway, call anytime, but I will start that report, now's the perfect time, since it just renewed.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
One more thing, Dean was one acknowledgement short, and I want to give credit where credit is due, and that is to you, council, because you've taken our vision and adopted that into policy, and that's what revitalized the safety program, so, without you guys, that wouldn't happen.
Zare's approved, dude.
And it's interesting too, is, all the department heads love this, but that's actually a section I've added to their annual evaluation, is there's four categories that are in the safety, like, attending meetings, getting reports in time, so, and it gets a green, amber, red status, and we talk about those things.
All right.
I will say that Julie is also a glorious testifying witness in court, and if she, if she tells you she doesn't like public speaking, she's lying about that.
Oh, yeah, she looks like a comedian right there.
I just don't like individuals who get paid 1.7 million and seem to forget that.
All right. Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Julie.
You're done now?
You're done, wonderful, thank you.
You can go.
All right. Tap funding for rec trails.
Yeah, we're going to have Kyle Gat, no, I'm kidding, Kyle's with us, he's my backup, but Jason couldn't be here, he's actually on vacation, and so, this first part is, so, the mayor and I sit with Jason on this, the RPA 8, and part of the tap is part of this, and basically, transportation alternative projects.
Still the chair.
Yeah, and you're still the chair, because I think they voted you in when you weren't there last year.
Yep.
Like, it's the only meeting you ever missed, and they put him back in. So, this came up is, there was 1.1 million left in the tap, and so, the tap funds, and so we got with.
And so the TAP funds, and so we got with Zane at the time, if you guys don't know, uh, they welcomed Penelope, AKA Penny. And she's now home after, I think, thirty-five days at the NIC. Yep, so she's back home. Mom and daughter and, and Zane, if he's at home watching, I hope he's not, are doing great. Um, and so we actually asked Zane to go to the, to the Trails Commission in rank order, uh, the different, my mouse is not working that good tonight. There we go. A rank order, um, what would fit into this, uh, for five hundred thousand dollars? And so what they ranked ordered was, first was South Fourteenth Street, and this would be from Bluff all the way down to Lincoln. And so think about on the side, the west side of where the River Church is. So it would cover that whole area, it would connect really big throughput that already exists on Lincoln Highway. And then also, once Bluff is done with the new multimodal, that's gonna be on Bluff as well. And that one is, uh, eight hundred fifty total, so the grant would cover five hundred thousand, there'd be a three hundred fifty thousand match. Next was Discovery Trail, um, and this was probably a higher estimate, but this was from, uh, redoing the bridge across Joyce's Slough using sewer funds. Because that, that's a, a gate that's for sewer, uh, uh, or the water safety stuff. And then redoing all of Joyce's Slough, and I've had comments, more comments than not, that it's not as bad as on the trail as. Well, yeah.
Not at all.
Yeah. But the one, the cost where it is higher is because it would get the grade changed by Twenty-Fifth Avenue North. So it's not ADA accessible right now, where you come up the hill by the Twenty-Fifth Avenue North pump station. As you come up to the levee, it's too steep. And so that was always a Gary McDermott thing, we always had on our list every time we'd meet. Uh, and then also, though, the, the reason it's higher cost is completely redoing from Twenty-Fifth Avenue North all the way to Rainbow Park. So you head towards that Turtle Creek lock, which we love so much, right, and then you go up and around. So that would be completely redone, that's why the higher cost there. Uh, and then, and Mill Creek Parkway, and this would actually be where Thirteenth Avenue North is now. Getting to the middle school would continue on Thirteenth Avenue North, but then it would hug the fence line, not Mill Creek. So it'd take, hug the fence line, go up by, uh, the, uh, the Principals Church, and then come up on Nineteenth. So it would connect that. That's about a million, because it's, you know, brand new, that would have to be done to connect Thirteenth Avenue North to Nineteenth Avenue North. So that's where you see five hundred thousand, five hundred thousand. I think I went out of order, I was going order here, then. And then South Eighteenth Street, though, the, the Trail Commission put on hold because that connects to manufacturing that's completely torn up right now. So we didn't think, they didn't think that that would be a good one at this point in time. So these are all, these are all due August fifteenth. Uh, to the, the RPA eight to then make a decision. Although, it was interesting, originally I thought it was just us and Akokada, but then I heard that Command's had been talking about doing one too. So we want to make sure we put this in, if you guys are all supportive of, uh, these choices here, uh, to do this.
Are these, is this the order that they ranked them in?
Yes, yes.
So. So it was South Fourteenth first?
Yes, the, the first one was South Fourteenth Street, then Discovery Trail, then Mill Creek Parkway, and then South Eighteenth last, just because it's being under, under construction right now.
But where will we get the local match?
Yeah, where does the local match come from?
Yeah. So that would basically be, you know, we just did the sidewalk program for two hundred K, for example. We could look at, uh, this could be, you know, is there available funds that, in other areas that we could come up with to be able to, to be able to match this?
I mean, what fiscal year would the match need?
Uh, yes, uh, see, I, I know on the, the next topic, it was not till twenty twenty-nine. Um, I don't know that answer.
I can, we have a.
I need to, that would check tomorrow, or Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah, I can't remember what fiscal year it'd be available either. Because that would make a.
Yeah.
That'd be important to know, as far as determining the funding, the local match, yeah. I would guess that if three cities apply, they're probably gonna try to split it three ways, the one point one million. That's just my guess on the history of working with the RPA, so that would actually make the local match a little higher. Um, depending on which one. But maybe they'll give it all to one person too, I don't know. So.
True.
Yeah.
And so there's nothing gained, nothing lost, uh, we could put in, and then if we don't get any, we could always not have to have a decision on that. But if we do, then.
Counselor Musman.
The, the other thing, when we voted on these, uh, three here, um, South Fourteenth was picked because that'd be the least cost for the project, and it'd also run across a couple parks in the area too. Because you have the soccer field, and then you have, what is that, Honeywound?
Twenty-seven. Oh, gotcha, gotcha, yep.
I, I guess my question on that, so looking at that one, that one goes basically to.
No, it cuts over.
It cuts, it cuts over, yeah. So.
I missed that.
That's kinda nice.
It, it cuts over, would that be?
That's a fairway drive.
Harrison? Right?
Fairway drive.
It'd be Harrison Drive, and it cuts over?
I think there's some planted right away, we have through there.
Yep.
So it'd, it would run right along the, the middle school sports complex, and then it would go by Jurgerson and then.
Gosh, they could usually tap into the soccer fields too.
It's right there?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, no. Am I, am I not following right?
The soccer fields.
There's Jurgerson right there.
That's Honeywound. That's the church.
Right.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah. Oh, sorry, it's not Harrison, that's not Harrison.
We're nailing a lot of things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Harrison's right there.
Yeah, sorry. I was, I was off, I was off a road.
Yeah, but you're right, it goes by George Morrison's Field, over by the Community College.
Yeah.
Goes by the high school, uh, sports arena area. Goes by River Church, then comes a curve on a fairway. And then, I'm not sure, is that by?
Farmer Fleet.
Farmer Fleet, and, yeah.
It's interesting.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a good idea, or potentially a good idea, but this is an on-budgeted item.
It is, and we have spent all of our, most of our excess funds.
And, and I would suggest that it's not in fiscal twenty-five, or fiscal twenty-six. I would suggest it would be in fiscal twenty-seven.
We'll know on Thursday when those funds could be available, and the applications due the fifteenth.
Fifteenth of August.
And we have a meeting on the twelfth.
Yep.
And just as a little piece of history, before my counsel, uh, before I got a counsel, I was on the Trails Committee way back then. And that South Fourteenth idea has been around for a long time, just because of that map that we're looking at. It just connected a lot of things in an area that really isn't connected.
Yep.
It just.
I'm just picturing kids on bicycles going to baseball, going to soccer.
Yes.
Yeah, because it hits a lot of neighborhoods.
Hits a lot of neighborhood.
And then it'll hit Bluff, which will have nice bike trails. That's probably the one, but, yeah, I guess, I don't know where.
Well, we'll find out Thursday, and I guess we could bring it back on August twelfth for a resolution for you guys to approve or disapprove at that point.
Well, I'd have to go to a business meeting anyway, for that, wouldn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
But I think we'd have to know where the funding mechanism is for our match at that point too, right?
Exactly, yeah.
Yep.
Sounds good.
So we're going to get a motion to move this to the business meeting pending, and then at the business meeting, we'll discuss the, uh, where the local match would come from, and when the funding would be available.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Can we have roll call, please?
Got some more shimmers.
Yes.
Drummond?
Yes.
Seeley?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Oren?
Yes.
Musman?
Yes.
Kearns?
Yes.
All right.
All right, the final, the final one. So this, this is basically, this purpose of this was, uh, the engineering department to apply for traffic safety improvement grant. The TSIP, which is also through the RPA, which is also gonna be for August fifteenth. And so in twenty twenty-four, the city council applied for TSIP funding for construction of turn lanes at the intersection of Mill Creek Parkway and Sixteenth Street Northwest. Iowa DOT suggested modifying the grant application to include roundabout improvements instead. City Council tabled the item with consideration of traffic safety improvement project grant in twenty twenty-five. So this is a five hundred thousand dollar match, and our match to that would be nine hundred thousand, because the total cost is one point four million dollars for that. And if you guys remember this, Jason updated this part here, as far as DOT looking at the TSIP. The reason it qualifies for the TSIP, which is, this is the sad part, is because of the number of accidents. It has to meet a threshold to be able to qualify for that. I remember, I think, a couple of years ago, they were funding like almost a hundred percent of the roundabouts when it first came about. But not to go too deep into roundabouts, but you know, basically, the issues that we've had there, and Kyle Gasman's here tonight as one of our newest engineer members. He's actually gonna be going out when school starts, because one of the, the troublesome areas is the left turns when you're heading north on Sixteenth Northwest, getting onto Mill Creek. That's where the accidents occur. People trying to make the left turn, because people are coming around from Thirteenth on Mill Creek, and they're coming around at good speeds. Uh, so he's gonna go out there, monitor that, see how that looks, but I think it's gonna probably confirm or deny, uh, what's going on as far as the traffic. You can see the traffic amounts, you know, near seven thousand in the westbound lane, near six thousand in the eastbound lane. And then what comes north off of Sixteenth Northwest, which would be next to the middle school, is almost twenty-two hundred. And then southbound is seventeen thousand, or seventeen hundred and eighty. So you can see, like, and that's the times we're looking. You know, the key times are that before school and then after school. Um, but we do also have a few accidents, uh, based on when twilight, or, you know, when the sun's coming up and when the sun's going down. Uh, typically, it's, can be worse at Thirteenth, because you're looking directly west into the sun. But when you're turning on Sixteenth Northwest in the evening, you're turning right into the sun. Or you're looking in the sun, trying to see who's coming up on you on Mill Creek there. So.
So I thought I read that part of it was running the stop sign.
Yeah. And so basically, ten crashes were caused by failure to yield right away or ran a stop sign.
So, you know, we asked that those lit up stop signs go in a couple of years ago, and none of the lights are working at this time.
Yep, and I don't think these were at night, these were actually day, but yes, we, we were tracking those stop signs lit back up.
And the ripple strips?
Rumble, rumble rolls?
Rumble strips, not existing yet?
I don't remember the rumble rolls.
I don't know.
Oh, two years ago.
So where, where's the nine hundred come from?
Yeah.
Well, this would be two thousand twenty-nine, and this would be post-manufactured driving bluff. And that would have to be, at that time, uh, most likely be general obligation bonds based on availability for that. But this is twenty twenty-nine.
Um, I, I don't have a problem with roundabouts, I got a problem with, to, yeah, sadly enough, yeah. We, we, I mean, we keep spending, I just don't, yeah. So I don't have problems with roundabout, but the funding is what I'm concerned about.
Is Sixteenth the most dangerous? Because it seems to me like it should be Thirteenth.
Yes, I agree.
Uh, it's not, according to the results, it's actually Sixteenth.
And do we think that's because we have the school?
People not pay attention.
Probably.
Some of that. A lot of them, I think a lot of it's just they don't pay attention.
Now, hopefully, the new law on the phones will help with some of that.
Yeah.
And we've been having trouble too at Nineteenth, it's, it's that evening time with the sun.
Yeah.
And it's typically, it's the turning left off of Nineteenth.
If, if you focused on Thirteenth, would it slow traffic down enough to make Sixteenth safer?
So they can't.
Because more traffic goes on Thirteenth, I'm assuming, right?
Right, yeah. So you're slowing down to get to Thirteenth, and you're also.
Would, would that slow traffic down enough to make it?
Has anyone experienced sitting at Hartsmill in Mill Creek for twenty minutes, because of all the semi-traffic? I mean, let's talk about that.
And they come over the top of the hill.
And, and see, this is where I'm too. I have no problem with roundabouts, I really don't. I don't want to see four on the bypass, the Parkway. I don't want to see that. I don't want to see that.
I don't think you would get one on.
I'll put six on it.
You won't get one on. You want to get one on, you want to get one on Thirteenth Avenue North.
But I have the money.
They want to put a roundabout on Thirteenth Avenue. When they, when they qualified for that, because I'm remembering the gentleman that came up when they did our intersection, my intersection up by my gas station. You've got a hill there, so you're not gonna get a roundabout there, because they don't like to do them by hill. I'm thinking, I think you'll prove Thirteenth, you come over a hill right on top of it.
Right.
And literally right on top of it.
Yeah, it's not ideal.
I don't know what the, I don't know what the answer is, I'm just asking the question, because I feel like more traffic is on a couple other roads. And I just had the thought of, if you slow people down, maybe that would change that coming around that curve, I don't know. Kyle, what do you think?
Well, you could say, if you have the roundabout on.
You should come up to the mic.
Come on up.
Come on up.
Yeah, come on up.
Get your feet wet.
At least it's water, not fire.
I know where Kyle was gonna go, with the Sixteenth slowed down on Thirteenth than everybody else.
Yeah, absolutely. Basically, if you have the roundabout at Sixteenth, then it would slow down the traffic going towards, um, Walmart area.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Same thing.
So same, same difference, if you're versus putting it at Thirteenth, it would slow down for, for Sixteen, so. But the crashes are at Sixteen, so.
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we go about that? And with the hill on, coming into Thirteenth, you're not gonna be able to see, um, a roundabout. You don't want to add more crashes to, to that list with the roundabout there.
Makes sense. Excellent answer.
When is Mill Creek Parkway gonna actually need repaved? Do you, like, five years, ten years, any idea?
That's a Jason question, he's not here, I'm sorry. I just started.
No, I think you're probably, yeah, I think you're probably spot on, it's probably five to ten years, as far as. And that was, not to digress, but that was the discussion with DOT, I think the mayor and I have had a couple times with them.
Yep.
You know, on, it'd be great that they take over that before we have to pay for that.
Interesting.
Yeah.
What is the whole?
You can mold over, we could bring this back as well, if you want, you know.
That's fine.
For the business meeting, same thing, and you guys can have, you know, we can have the same discussion, and Jason will be here by then too. But we, we wanted to run these by you now, so there was time till before the next meeting, because then we can still get it done before the fifteenth.
So what, we have a borrowing plan that gets us somewhere, so this isn't on it, though?
Uh, well, but I think what we could do is, it, it fits in when we talk about roads and the cost that we have on a borrowing plan for roads. Now, Jason will say, I'm committing heresy, but I'd say, if this was that important, I would look at pavement management. That's where I'd look.
I would agree with that.
And I know he doesn't like that, because he's got a lot of things to do, but if this is a safety issue, we should really figure out how to fix the safety issue.
Well, we could put a four-way stop there.
The people at the stop signs don't want to stop. No, and, and they talked about in this here, I think you read that, Councilman Seeley, but they, they don't, the stoplights is not the answer.
No, and I'm not paying for a stoplight, I'm talking four signs that cost us five hundred bucks.
That light up.
I don't think that's a good idea.
Just give us some rumble strips, please, some rumble strips.
I don't think rumble strips changes anything here.
No.
Put it this way.
I think part of the problem is the sun.
Cody, the only reason I say this is, because I just left my daughter's house Saturday, lives down in Command's by Swan's Slough. So I went back to the highway. Never thought about it, but there was accidents always coming off of Washington Boulevard onto sixty-seven right there.
Yep.
And there's, there's four for sure. Ba ba bo, ba ba bo, ba ba, I'm like.
Oh, the rumbles.
Just to remind you that, there is a stop sign coming at you.
So.
But there was a lot of bad accidents at that intersection, I remember that.
How'd you get through the roundabout? Was it scary? How'd you get through the roundabout?
Yeah, I love the roundabout. I just don't want to go through town, so I went out that way.
I mean, that might, that might solve the, the stop sign issue, the running the stop sign.
But just remind you that, oh, I'm daydreaming here.
You still have the, the left, the left turn issue.
You still got the left turn issue.
Yeah.
And then, I think the only way.
No left turns.
Yeah, just, ah, make them come back into town, go to Nineteenth. Make them come back and go Nineteenth and clog that up more.
Yeah.
No, I think we should send them down, they should send them down the main avenues, so they stop by.
Like they used to go there, they had no choice but to go to Main Avenue.
Yep.
The semis do already.
I don't think the rumble strip thing's a terrible idea in the short term. I don't think it's a long-term solution, but.
I'm not sure it solves this, solves any problem, though. Safety problem. But I'll be honest, I, I think we got issues at multiple intersections.
We do.
And I think we could, we can throw money at stuff all day, but we also have a lot of other issues all over town.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Our, so, as Matt likes to say, rack and stack. And planting seeds for future shade, and all that stuff.
I think we're still back to, I think we're still back to.
I think you just start four of them, you know.
I need time and space to determine.
I still.
That's okay, that's all right.
I still think we're back to, we have to prioritize.
Yeah.
This is a bad intersection. Wasn't like we didn't blow off Stocko Lane for five years, not getting blacktopped, because we did.
Yeah, but I.
I know, I, trust me, I know the people that lived on it. When's that, when's my road getting blacktopped? Oh, I thought it was supposed to be this year, Jason told me it was this year. Well, Jason took the money and moved it somewhere else.
No, wait, no, wait, because there are too many rumble strips.
Yeah, apparently, but anyway. So you can come out of pavement management program and say, you're not doing that road, Jason, you're doing this intersection.
And it's gonna be a roundabout, Pat.
It's gonna be a roundabout.
Yeah, okay.
It's gotta be a roundabout. I think the only way to solve that problem is gotta be a roundabout. And I think it would solve Thirteenth Avenue slowing them down. You're going into twenty, by the time you get up around that corner, you got, you ain't gonna hit, you're not gonna hit forty miles an hour by the time you get to Thirteenth Avenue. So I have a chance to get out on.
Yeah, I mean. I don't know about that.
That's a challenge accepted.
We can't just get after it right away, I mean, I guess.
I definitely don't want you to drive that fast.
They get the movement out across that Mill Creek pretty good.
Went down, I went through the Command's probably when I'm Friday, and I was.
Forty-five.
I was doing fifty-five.
So.
All around that area, all day long.
So it needs, i- if we're gonna apply, again, same thing as the last item, needs to get approved at a business meeting on the twelfth for the application on the fifteenth. So does counsel want to move this to a business meeting?
Make a motion, we'll do it that way.
So moved, yeah. Okay, second. But then, I think we, Jason.
Between now and then?
Jason, yeah, between now and then, Jason needs to give us. Jason, yeah, between now and then, Jason needs to give us a clear picture on, on where, where we're gonna be used pulling those dollars from, because I don't have an appetite to continue the path of borrowing above and beyond what we're planning.
Well, listen, I just heard it on the audit. City needs to be careful taking on any debt. I wrote it down.
Wrote that down.
I know, and that was said right before the Funny, I was gonna say something, but I decided it'd be nice.
Okay, good job.
All right.
All right.
We have a motion and a second.
Yep.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Got some more shimmers. Gunnar Minn.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Does anybody have any updates?
Kyle was officially inaugurated into the city business.
Great job.
Kyle, welcome aboard.
Very good.
Welcome to craziness, buddy. Glad to have you.
And welcome.
Deflect to Jason. Just kidding. Any, any updates from anyone? No? Okay. We are adjourned.